The other kids are probably coming in there. Just getting ready. Thinking.
Good evening, welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for August 15, 2018. This meeting is being audio and video recorded per the open meeting laws of the Massachusetts. We ask those of you who will be speaking tonight or making any comments to please come to a microphone, state your name and your address. Tonight we are going to be hearing a continuation of Nine Fruit Street, a conversion of a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling. We then have a public hearing for a continuation for Six Hill Street. We then have two hearings that will be continued, the Preserve at Abbeville and Abbeville Common, and then we will be reviewing and approving minutes for the board. So right now, I would ask Mr. Brogan to please come up and continue the public hearing for Nine Fruit Street. Welcome. Right here, here you go. Mike, what do you got, three copies? And can you? Yeah, we should, why don't you make, we should make a couple more copies. Mike, what do you have, three of the other, you have another visual?
Yeah, it's just a-
Why don't you ask, why don't you ask Amy to make some copies of that as well while she's doing the other one?
So this is a second.
Yep.
Sure.
Yes.
See what we're saying?
Hmm?
This, this is a, this is a plan.
Yeah, okay.
Right, you're taking.
You're getting happy, right?
Yeah.
Conversion to two families square.
Eight fifty-two.
It's required for the- Special permit?
Yes, special permit.
That's all he needs?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I could take a picture of it and I could send it to you and you could- We need extras.
You want to give me a second, I'll go to my office.
Sure, I'll get one of these.
Picture of startup and out the pictures, Amy. You're pict-, are you trying to pin out pictures or? Or? You're all set?
The black and whites are there, I'm trying to download them.
Mike, why don't you start presenting, wait, Amy does that. Here you go. Go ahead.
So you can see, I want to put a two-car garage onto the side of the house with a second dwelling above it right here. This is the existing dwelling. The driveway comes straight in here, I'm gonna have it come straight into a two-car garage from the ground level. Above it will be the second family dwelling. There's a, there's a layout in there of the dwelling.
Say again?
There's a layout in your packet of the dwelling.
Do you have that, Amy, okay. Bring that up.
So this is an existing house, kitchen, living room, three-bed, bath. This is the new kitchen, living room, bath, laundry, one-bed. This is twenty-four by thirty-six. Single-car garage door coming in this way. Two-car garage.
Okay. Which way is the garage coming in, from the front?
Yes, sir, come right in like this, this is the existing driveway already, this whole square here already, so just drive right under.
Mike, does the existing home have a garage?
No.
Okay.
It's not.
Completely new structure.
Yes.
This is a completely new structure.
Yes.
Is this a zoning matter because of the two-family concept? I mean, I mean, this is not a setback issue, this is not a variance issue, this is not a-
The setbacks are laid out on the plan, we meet all twenty-five.
Oh, this is basically, it is a bylaw in our books that allow a conversion of a single-family home prior, a house built prior to the adoption of our bylaws, which was nineteen fifty-three, that doesn't change the character of the neighborhood, and that allows for a minimum of eight hundred square feet per single-family, so-
We don't have any, any dimensional issues or anything like that with this? No setback issues, no frontage issues, no lot coverage issues, nothing like that?
No.
Okay.
We'd have to get a separate building permit to build this place.
He would have to get a building permit, I think, I think this septic system on the existing home has, is failed, is a-
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, December first, we can perk. So we're gonna perk it December, well, their votes, the new septic system.
And if the board approved this, obviously, septic system would have to meet-
It's gonna go from a three to a four-bed.
Okay. And when was the existing house built? Mike?
I'm not quite sure. Sixty, sixty-one?
No, I think-
The, the bylaw is sixty-three.
On, for the adoption of this one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Sixty-one.
You, you think?
Oh, I know. You can look it up, but yeah. Sixty-three, the bylaw was changed, not fifty-three.
Amy, do you have his initial application, he did have a, he did have something, you did have something from the assessor's office showing when it was built?
Mm-hmm.
I should have that.
Nineteen sixty-one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Does this, does this structure have to exist before we give the special permit for it?
No, it, it just basically, our bylaw says the resulting dwelling must contain. So what we're looking at is, we're looking, does it meet the dimensional requirements, eight hundred square feet? Obviously, we want to make sure it meets the dimensional setbacks. We want to make sure it doesn't include a basement area or below ground level. And we want to make sure that it meets the character of the neighborhood. So wouldn't, if you built an apartment building, it wouldn't be characteristic of this neighborhood. That's really what our bylaws, those are the limits on our bylaws.
The, the house to the right of it is a garage under, same house. Ranch garage under.
Is that to the right or to the left?
Directly to the right.
To the right. Do you know what number that is?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Chris, are there any further restrictions on anything like this, for example, which goes to sort of a, can everybody in town do this?
Anybody who has a home that was built prior to the bylaw.
Right, a sixty-three.
Right.
Chris, have, have there been any instances where it seems that in this case, there's an addition being proposed to the building, the existing building? Would, would the addition still fall under, in the bylaw? It says the conversion of the single-family dwelling in existence at the time of the bylaw adoption. Would, would an addition be, I guess, if it's an addition, is that still part of the existing dwelling?
Well, it says conversion of a single-family hell, dwelling in existence at the time of the bylaw. And then it says that the resulting dwelling shall not contain less than, so it really doesn't specify whether or not the resulting dwelling can't have an addition added on to it. If that helps.
Yeah.
I was kind of asking the same question.
Yeah.
About, did the, did the structure have to exist before?
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions for the board? And the roof, the roof line of the-
Yeah, if you go to that picture.
Mm-hmm.
No.
No? One of these pictures in the-
Yeah, so. So, the width of the garage is twenty-four feet, and the width of the house is twenty-four feet, and I'm just saying that I'm gonna match the two peaks, so that one's not above the other, that's why it's twenty-four feet this way and twenty-four feet this way, so that they match when you look at it aesthetically.
I'm, I'm confused, Mike, because this says twenty-two right there in the bottom.
Right, but if you notice, that roof line carries all the way over to this full A-frame, so. Oh, that number there is forty, the front-to-back number on the house is twenty-four.
So he doesn't show that, he's showing this here. Okay.
So that these, so that these two A-frames are the same aesthetically.
Do you understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Amy, can you go back, Mike, you've included a picture of the step.
Yeah, that's just a picture of the front door to show the elevation changes, so that, that, that is the foundation height, and that's the front door, so it just shows you that the driveway is right there at the level we're gonna start.
Now, will the garage line up with the foundation?
Top, top, yeah, the, the top of the garage will, yeah, the floor will be level, floor to floor.
And where will the door be to the proposed second family?
The, next to the garage.
In the front or in the side?
On the front, there'll be a sixteen-foot single door, and then-
Okay.
A three-foot door.
Okay. So the front door, the main residence, is actually not facing forward, it's actually facing to the side?
Right, it faces on the side.
Okay, emptying into the kitchen?
Goes right into the living room, yeah.
Mike?
This front door, this is the living room of the existing house.
Of the existing house?
Yeah, and the front door goes in. And then this door will go in and go straight up a set of stairs, come into the living room.
Okay, come in behind the bath and laundry that you have on there?
Yeah, yeah.
These are acceptable drawings for us to evaluate and make a decision today, we need architecturally specific drawings?
Not for the special permit, for a building permit, obviously, he's got-
For a building permit, I'll get full notice, but-
For us, this is-
Because we're basically just acting on-
Correct.
On E two F.
Correct, and D two. Any other questions from the board at the moment?
Yeah, I, I have a question, on this, this first sketch of the, this is the- So, the, the page just before the foundation plan, the foundation plan shows an overlap of eight feet between the existing Nine Fruit Street and the two-car garage, and then on the next sheet, the sheet before that-
Oh, yeah. I'm not sure where this is gonna shift into, to be honest yet, but there's a ton of room, there's no bound lines, so this is worst case, the other would be if I moved it forward eight feet.
My, my point with that is, it's just a little bit, it seems inconsistent in just whether or not those, it'll be an addition, or if, if they're not connected at that point, is that considered an addition anymore?
Well, if they're not connected, they're two separate, right, structures, so-
They will be connected.
So they have to be connected.
Yeah. I just wanted to clear that.
Okay.
Inconsistency.
We can make that a condition.
As a condition of-
Yeah.
There'll be two separate, two separate services, electrical services?
Yes.
Well, how's water gonna be provided?
Town water will come into the new structure and wells for the old.
Okay.
Are there two exits, two entry entrances? Each one have two entries and two exits?
Yes, it will.
Is there additional door that we're not seeing here, or?
Off the back of the kitchen, I'll put a deck, with a set of stairs, yeah.
Going to a deck, right. And same thing with the, this addition?
That is on the addition, there'll be a deck, already the house has-
Two.
Two exits.
Where are the egresses on the existing house, obviously, the front door?
Front door, and then off the kitchen to a sun porch.
Okay, so in the back, basically, in the back?
On the side.
Side?
Yes.
On the existing?
Yeah.
What, does it go down, is it?
Goes into a screen porch.
Okay. Is that, that's not on our drawing though, right?
It's on your block plan.
That's not on it?
On the block plan.
Yeah, it's first page.
Same here, right here.
Okay.
You can see how they angled it.
Okay. All right. Okay, anything else?
Mike, Chris, what, what, what bylaw?
E two F.
What is it?
E two F.
E two F, okay.
We actually have two bylaws, so, we have D two, C two, which is conversion of a single-family dwelling in existence at the time of the bylaw adoption, due to family requiring a special permit. And then we have E two F, which goes into greater clarification, requiring the minimum square footage required and other requirements by the board.
Is it, is the special permit being granted against just one of these, or what's being cited?
It would be, it'd be D two.
Okay, D two, D two, which one, D two?
C. Would be D two, C two, okay.
I presume the exterior will, will coincide with the, the character of the existing house and the neighborhood?
Correct. Correct. Okay, any other questions, we'll open up to the public. Rich, do you have any questions or concerns? As most of you know, Rich McCarthy, our town planner, joining us for a second meeting in a row, thank you.
No, not necessarily questions, although I would say that, you know, if you decide to make a finding, or approval for that, that question that you raised, I think those should be incorporated in the decision to make sure there is some safeguards relative, to make sure the design is, you know, there is some guidelines how the addition in the existing home are put together, so that makes it seem like it's one home.
Got it. This time we'll open it up to the public, if anybody has any questions or comments. Again, we ask you to state your name, your address, and speak into the mic.
Is this on? Yeah, thank you. Dr. Trish Carpenter, one twenty Seacong Street. I have several questions to the board. One is that this really doesn't appear to be a, an addition to a structure, it appears to be a separate building. There is no communication between one and the other. The house that was mentioned with the garage underneath, yes, it does have a garage underneath, but that garage leads into the main residence, there is no entrance to the main residence, so I have difficulty believing this is a addition to an additional structure. I don't know what the bylaws say, but I think that's something the board should consider. The other two have to do, other two questions I have have to do with the property. One is that it appears that there is someone already in that property, living in the basement, which is of course not permitted, and I would suggest that the building inspector or this board ask the building inspector to check into that, to see whether or not there is somebody living there, I've been by there any number of times, and there's lights on at night in that, in that basement, and makes me think that someone is living in there, and, which would be in violation. Three, this board, in the past, had a meeting concerning the road and the gate that was built into the property, and as I remember, Mr. Brogan stated emphatically that that gate would always be locked except in an emergency. For the last two weeks anyway, and probably longer, that gate has leaned against a tree and not been locked. So, I just, I, I think of this, and I look at these things, and I question whether or not, what's going on there? And I, I think the board needs to take a good thought about what's happening here.
All right. So you have three questions, one is, is this an addition to the structure or something different? The second question was that you feel there's somebody living there, and I think we heard at our last public hearing, Mr. Bullock addressed that concern that you are allowed to have individuals living in your home. So Mr. Brogan is allowed to rent out- He's allowed to rent out, have five people living in his home. It doesn't specify where they're living, so he is allowed to have somebody living in his home. I know you're rolling your eyes, but Mr. Bullock was here at the last meeting and stated that. The third concern was that there is a gate somewhere on the prop, there's a gate on the property that, with regard to locking or unlocking, so. Mr. Brogan, I guess I'll let you address, why don't we address the third one first, since it seems rather, should be an easy one to resolve, and then you can talk to us about the first one, which is whether this is an addition to the structure, and, and how you got to this. So you can, where is this gate, where is the gate again, could you show it to us?
There's two panels that we had here for a long ti, oh. There's two corral panels here that we had here for a long time, while we were working here. I'm gonna be honest with you, it's all, my family lives in that house, my kids live in that house, that road is a way that they coming back and forth to the barn now, so. I don't need to gate it, I own it all. You know, I, I gated, since I didn't want kids up there and stuff, you know? I don't have to gate it, I chose to gate it. Now, the kids are there, they come back and forth all the time. It's, that's what it is.
Is it a road, or is it, is it a road, or is it a car path, what is it?
It's a private car path that we use to go from one dwelling to the other.
Does it go out to the street?
Yeah, yeah, it, they'll use it as a turnaround, they'll come in and go back out that way. I, I have four kids, and three of them have cars, so we have a few cars.
Okay, but it's not paved?
No, no.
Is there intentions to pave it at the circle?
No, no.
Okay.
No.
I'm, I'm sorry, now I'm confused to where the gate, where this path is, okay? You said it-
There's a path over here, sir.
Right.
That comes in this way.
Yeah.
Goes all the way to the farm.
Okay.
Okay.
And where is this gate that we're talking about?
It's not a gate, it's, it's, it's not a gate, it's two panels that you put together to keep horses, and I put up temporarily, so kids didn't come in there. Okay, the, I mean, I, I don't see what it has to-
Is this path entirely on your property?
A thousand percent. From one end to the other.
All right, and then with regard to the, Mr. Carpenter's first question, which is regard to the structure?
Well, it, it's a two-family, it can't be connected, first of all, it has to have fire separation, so they can't, they'll, they'll touch each other, but they'll have a firewall in between them, so you can't go putting a door from one to the other, it's a separate dwelling. They are overlapped here, and it will be probably four to six feet, honestly, that they're gonna overlap. They have to touch, that's the code. Can't build a separate dwelling, can't build a separate structure, has to be connected.
You had mentioned that, Mr. Carpenter mentioned, is, your children are living in this house?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, are they paying rent or anything, or they just live in that?
My ex-wife and my four kids live in that house, yes, they pay rent.
Is there anybody not one of your family members living in that house?
Yes, yeah, there's a lady downstairs, yeah, she's a boarder.
Okay, all right, thank you. Does that answer your question, Mr. Carpenter?
I, I would only ask that this board look back on their minutes, and look what the board directed Mr. Brogan to do with that gate. It was very specific.
Okay.
Can I intervene now?
No. I'm gonna, as far as, I'd be honest with you, as far as I'm concerned, it's a gate on a private property. I have no rights to control a gate on a private property.
You did that?
Hmm?
You did that?
We, we have, this hea, this hearing is a public hearing, we have not closed the hearing, we have not made any decisions. The board has made no decisions, so a gate on a private property, I really can't control. I can't continue to control a gate on your property, nor can I control a gate on his property.
You did it back then.
Did, did we make a, did we make a finding?
Is he referring to-
What was our finding?
Your finding was that the gate should be locked at all times.
During, during what, during what special permit did we, we make that a condition? We haven't issued a special permit, so I'm, I'm concerned and confused. Since we haven't issued a special permit, we, I can't put a, I don't, I haven't made a, I haven't made a finding yet.
You made your point.
Some other concerns? No. Amy, would you, before the next, would you, would you pull the minutes for that and send them to me, and of, for this, these hearings, so we can, we can look into that with regard to this gate? Go ahead.
Yes, Larry Clark, one thirty Seacong Street. I'm confused, the original application for a special permit was for the existing house to be converted to a two-family. It appears this is totally different than what was originally put before this board for the special permit, so wouldn't this require a new- So wouldn't this require a new application for a special permit for what he's doing here? And also, this board mentioned that this should, this structure should blend in with the rest of the neighborhood. I don't see how this board can make a decision on these sketches. I would hope that the board would require architectural drawings so the board would have a sincere visual idea of exactly what is going to be built in this neighborhood. Also, my third thing is, at present time, the house is being rented as a two-family, which is in total violation of our zoning bylaw. So I would hope that our zoning enforcement officer would file a cease and desist against Mr. Brogan to make sure that that is back to a single family until this board comes with a decision. And apparently, this decision is weighing on now, whether they're gonna allow this addition to this home to convert it to a two-family. Also, Mr. Brogan made a statement that there'd be two services. State electrical code require, it only allows one service to a structure, whether it's a one-family or a two-family. So I don't see how he can say that there's gonna be two services, because that is in violation of state, Mass. state electrical code. Thank you for your time.
Okay. So we've got a couple of different things. You've got whether a new application should be filed. The application Mr. Brogan brought to us was for conversion of a single-family home to a two-family home. At one point, he was looking at converting the substructure, the basement, cellar, foundation, and this application, and he was looking into that to make sure it met our bylaws, or what was our bylaw with regard to what was considered above ground or below ground. He then came back with this application, this which shows an addition as opposed to using the subsurface. So I would say that no new application, because he's still applying for the same thing, a single-family home, to a two-family home. With regard to it blending into the neighborhood, I didn't hear anybody on. The board does not require architectural drawings for special permits. You know, ideally, it would be ideal to have one, but for us to review this, we don't need an architectural drawing to show us. We need to know, does it meet the minimum criteria? Obviously, the building department, as you know, would require a full set of architectural stamped plans. And with regard to renting it as a two-family, Mr. Brogan, are your, are your, your children are living in part of the home?
Yes, sir.
So, and are they paying rent?
Yes, sir.
They're paying rent to you, your children?
No, my children, no.
Okay. Are they, are they, are they emancipated? Are they all, what are their ages, or?
Twenty-four, twenty-one, eighteen, sixteen.
Okay, and they're your children?
My ex-wife.
Okay. So you're, you're not renting it out as a two-family, you're allowing your family to live in one half, and you're renting one part of it?
Correct.
Okay.
So there's not two families living there then, is what you're saying? There's not two families living there?
Well.
He has his families living there, and he has a renter living below. Doesn't, it's two families, you know?
It's not a zoning question, though.
Renting of rooms, how many, how many people are living there in total? How many people are living there in total?
Six.
Six, okay, you're not allowed to have six people. You're allowed to rent.
Five.
You're allowed to rent no more than five.
So is it a boarding house now?
What?
Is it a boarding house?
Well, I think you know the answer to that.
Well, no, I'm asking the board.
I think, I think, I think I would be upset if you called my children part of a boarding house. So we've now established that part of these are his children, so I think let's avoid the term boarding house. I think that's unfair.
Well, it was brought up before.
It is not a boarding house, I don't think.
So it's a two-family then?
It's, it's.
There's two separate families living there?
He's renting rooms, he's allowed to rent up to five rooms, he just told us he's renting six. So he is in violation, he's gonna have to ask someone to leave the home, and we'll make sure the enforcement officer knows that there are six right now, and that has to be no more than five.
But there's two separate families there. There's his family, and there's a separate person living below, not related. So it's a two-family.
I'm not gonna debate.
You can put however.
The bylaw, the bylaw, as you can, you can see it, is D two, C five. Clearly allows him to have five people in the home.
Be five different families.
It's five different people, not related.
Exactly. Okay?
Now, in addressing the architectural drawings which you say you don't require, there seems to be an awful lot of confusion among the board here trying to visualize actually what this was going to look like, and was it gonna look like two separate homes just budding on the corner? That's why I said, it would seem to me that, you know, for this board to really make an educated decision on whether this actually fits into the neighborhood, they need a set of stamped architectural drawings to see really what is going to be there. This does not show what's really gonna be there, so I don't see how this board can make an educated decision on what's being built in that piece of property.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. I didn't, I didn't hear that opinion being weighed by the board members who will be voting on this. That's your opinion, we appreciate it, we'll take it into consideration. We may require a walkthrough of the property. We haven't got to that point yet, but I appreciate it. Any other concerns?
Part of the.
Go ahead. Excuse me?
Part of any approval that we would do, give, okay, would be that it conforms to the single-family character of the neighborhood if we were to give approval. And then it would be incumbent on the building inspector to ensure that he signed off on that. And if we had to review it from the building inspector prior to the actual construction, then that would be a condition of approval. It could be.
Correct.
We condition something after.
We could make it.
We do that all the time.
Yeah.
You know, that it has to meet the character of a single-family. It must maintain one door in the front, that it must touch on the corner. These would all be conditions.
What I mean is, can we condition him to come back to us?
It would be conditioned that these things must be met for him to receive his permit, and his special permit.
But we can't, we can't condition something for us to review at a later point in time.
No, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be reviewing it. We're saying it has to touch on the corner, it would have to meet the character of a single-family neighborhood in the opinion of the building inspector, and if it required us to re-review it, we would. A drawing, we could force him to come back and review it if we felt the building inspector didn't think it was. We can condition that. Yeah. And you mentioned another concern, which I don't know the answer to. And only because we've seen it before, is multiple meters being put in homes. We had a, we had a hearing here recently where Main Street, a second meter was being added to a home. So we can, we can check into that. I don't know if the, I don't know the answer to whether or not the state does no longer allow two meters.
Well, a second meter is allowed if it's different voltage.
Hmm?
The second meter is allowed if it's different voltages.
If it's different?
Voltages. Coming into the property, in other words, you may have a property that has a single-phase service, now you wanna bring in a three-phase service, it's two different entities, or two different voltages. You could be bringing a 480-volt service in, and 110-volt, but you can't bring in 222-20-volt services into a home.
Brogan, do you have, can you answer that?
I certainly can. In the state of Massachusetts, he's correct, you're not allowed to hang two services to the house, meaning have two overhead cables. What they do is they come in with one overhead cable, come down the pipe on the side of the house, and set two meters.
But that's not what you stated. Excuse me. Go ahead.
I think that the question was directed whether there'd be two different utility bills, if I'm not wrong.
Correct.
There will be two different utility bills, Mr. Weida.
Will there be one meter or two meters?
There will be two meters.
Does that answer your? Thank you.
I just wanna make sure the terminology. A service is the lateral drop as well as the meter. That's what the statement was made, that there was two services, not that there would be two meters, two separate bills. Yes, that's legal, you bring one drop in, that's one service. It's a two-family service, but it's still one service. The statement was made, there'd be two services. I was just trying to clear the ear and make sure that we were talking about factual things here.
Thank you. That's good information. Go ahead.
Karen Clark, 130 Seacon Street. Just a question to Mr. Brogan, is he planning on redoing his septic system before this addition occurs?
I think he mentioned he was gonna do perk tests in December, but I'll let him talk to that.
Yes, I'm gonna do perk tests in December, and the system would be done before the addition was even started. So, yes.
So if we didn't grant you the special permit, you still have to do a new.
I'm gonna do a three-bed system, and if I get the, then I'll do a four.
Does that answer that?
That does answer my question, thank you. I have one more question, though, however. Mr. Brogan mentioned that there has to be a firewall and additional, additional issues addressed to separate these two buildings, even though they are attached to each other. So in my estimation, even though he's adjoining these two buildings, they're separate. They're separate, stand on their own, two-family buildings. And when Mr. Brogan came to this board initially, and when he first filled out his application for a two-family, it was based on Nine Fruit Street as it stood. There was no mention of an addition. There was mention at one point about digging around the foundation to make the basement not a basement anymore, but I still can't understand how this board can allow an individual to come in with a particular application to turn Nine Fruit Street as it stood, turn that into a two-family, and now do a complete turnaround and allow Mr. Brogan to build a sedition, kinda putting the cart before the horse. You know, why is it that Mr. Brogan gets to put this addition on and now get an approval for a two-family? It's not what he, it's not what he first signed up for, it's not what he applied for.
Well, I think what he applied for was a conversion of a single-family home to a two-family home. And I think we initially looked at, or he looked at, and came to the board discussing the use of the basement as part of that, one of the two families.
Correct.
Right. There was questions surrounding what was a basement, what was a cellar, how much had to be exposed in order for it to be considered a living level.
Correct.
He's then come back to us with a different option, and obviously has abandoned that option. But he's still asking the board for the exact same thing, the conversion of a single-family home to a two-family home.
But the conversion of an entirely different single-family home, not the single-family home that existed when he filed that application.
The same single-family home exists, does, you're not doing, are you tearing down the existing single-family home? The same single-family home that exists today will exist after the conversion.
That's why I'm thinking that the other part of the bylaw needs to be applied to his permit. This E two F.
Okay.
This actually talks about the conversion of a single-family dwelling in a way that he could possibly do such a, such a change to the home. That, because you're allowed to do a conversion of the property and have resulting 800 square feet for each. I think this has to be applied to his special permit.
Yes, it will.
Currently, that's not how, that's mean a change in his application.
Is there a difference between, is there a difference between converting an existing, single-family home and expanding an existing, single-family home, and then converting it to a two-family home? Or, let me, no, let me restate that. You're expanding a single-family home into a two-family home?
The bylaw doesn't specify that, and I'll, and I'll give you a good example. I mean, after reading it, is, I put an addition on my home. It is, if you look at my home, it still looks like a single-family home. I actually put a basement, like Mr. Brogan copied me. I put a basement, and then I put living space above it.
Mm-hmm.
It has everything except for a kitchen. My house was built in 1937. If I came to this board today, I would show you a home that's existing, and I'd say I wanna convert it to a two-family.
Okay.
And I wanna put, and I could do similar to them, mine would be the addition forward. Have I met the criteria by our zoning bylaw?
So, so.
I've got an existing, single-family home.
So you expanded a single-family?
Correct.
Just made a single-family, a bigger single-family?
Yes.
And then what you're saying is, is at some point in the future, after, presuming that the home was built before 1961, whatever the year was, that after you expanded this home into a larger, single-family home, you could then convert that single-family home into a two-family home?
Right. And the bylaw doesn't say I cannot. So that's.
We, basically, if you look at the second part here, we have to just as agree as a board, where it says number two. We just agree that no exterior changes that are made, you know, do not conform. I mean, they would have to conform to the neighborhood.
Correct.
Right. So if we agree that what he's doing to change that house conforms, it sounds like we can, you know.
Yeah, it says, you can't not do that. So, so, but, but let me ask you this, just to expand on that just for a second. So if I built the house prior to the bylaw, okay, that grandfather's me to expand that house into a two-family house. But if I built a house prior to the bylaw, and then after the bylaw, I expanded that house three times, is it still a house built prior to the bylaw?
According to our bylaw, it is.
In other words, there's the expansion, and I'm.
Our bylaws don't talk about, which is not, our bylaws don't talk about which has been expanded. It doesn't, it doesn't.
Right. But any of those additions, expansions have to meet other zoning, other zoning requirements.
Did the house before 61?
Mr. Brogan? No.
So, kinda, I think to get to your point, I can build this two-car garage, have the upstairs unfinished, not have a special permit, leave it there for a year or two, come back here and ask you for it. So, you know, I can build it whatever originally. What I wanna do is keep the character and keep the roof lines and do the right thing. But, I mean, honestly, I could get it, I could go next week and get a building permit from the building inspector and build that two-car garage with that unfinished space about, or even make it a great room. Make it a great room, I can put a bathroom in it. I can do anything there, and then I could come to you, so.
Well, that's, that was, that's the point. I think we all agree that you, or I, or anybody can expand our homes here in Norfolk. The question becomes really one of, then can you avail yourself of this bylaw that allows you to convert a single-family to a two-family? And the question was, is, is, is an expanded home the same as a home that was built prior to the bylaw? Or do you somehow, some way, you void your, you know, your.
It doesn't appear to be voided by any expansion of the house. Nothing appears to be voided by an expansion of the house.
That's a question.
I might add, I think the challenge for you as a board is that you could, you could make an interpretation on both sides of it, because it's not defined, so you could find that.
Right.
Both ways.
Right. But the overriding thing, it has to stay within the character.
It does have to stay within the single-family character, but there is no, you know, conversion is open to interpretation. And that's.
But I. That's, I think, what started the question.
I guess that, that's where I have a real problem here, is trying to internalize the word conversion. Because if we're pouring a whole nother foundation for a garage, and I respect the approach that you gave, okay, that actually, along the lines of Bob, what you talked about, makes some sense, but if you're, if you're putting in a separate garage, and then on top of that garage, you're putting a structure, we're not converting anything. Now, once that found, that garage is there, and that structure's there, then we say, okay, now I wanna convert it to a family, from a single-family to a multiple-family dwelling. And when, that doesn't make sense, the way the bylaw is written, because it, in effect, it in effect clearly states, the way I read it, is it talks about conversion. And this is an entirely separate foundation. But once that foundation is poured and that garage is built, then how do we look at that structure? And is that one structure, and the structure is therefore grandfathered based on the fact that it was built, the original part was built prior to 63? And therefore, then, he could go about and converting it per our bylaw. But as it looks right now, I have trouble getting my arms around the word conversion when he's pouring a whole brand-new structure that, when you're, just because you're attaching two foundations, budding them up against another, it's not a conversion, it's a new structure, it's a separate standalone structure.
The conversion is single-family to two-family. That's the conversion. That's just, that's converting from a single-family home, our, our district's single-family home, to our district, two-family home.
Then in the existing structure, I would interpret that as saying he could, has to, would have to convert the existing structure that was built prior to 61.
Each resisting, each resulting dwelling unit. Each resulting dwelling unit. So it allows, it, it, it could be interpreted either way. We will deliberate this during our, during our deliberations, we can. Is there?
You have some questions?
Is there, is it the opinion of the board, they'd either like to see a walkthrough of the site or a better view of the existing home with the addition, this addition put on it? What would they prefer, would they like both? A walkthrough or a more clear plan, what the front of the house is gonna look like from the street and from the side view? Any opinion?
In my opinion, I don't think there's, how can we as a board judge whether or not the exterior changes made in an addition conforms to the single-family character of the neighborhood without any architectural drawings at all? I don't think we can make that determination.
Any other opinions on that? Any other opinions on that?
Do, do, do we, do we, in other words, doesn't the, doesn't the building department, does the building department...
He would, he will require those for a building permit.
So, and one...
So, it's, it's something that can be, it's not duplication of effort, he'll have to do it some point.
Yeah.
So, can you provide the board with some...
As long as you give me a direction. I don't want to draw, have one thing drawn, and then you put, and then they gotta go have something else drawn at thousands of dollars. I mean, you know...
Well, I think you got to, I think you have to draw it like you have it presented on your plan view, is I think how I would expect it to be drawn.
Has Bob Bullock weighed in on this new plan at all?
Has, have we got any comments from, Amy?
Has Bob Bullock seen any of this new...
Have we got any comments in the building department on this?
No, I never saw this before tonight, so I almost said it was...
Have you, have you had any discussions with the...
Would it be valuable to have Bob give us a comment on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would help give us some direction.
All right. So maybe what we could do is we could ask the building commissioner to look at this plan, give us his opinion, and then at that time, we will contact you and require, if he, if he approves it, or if he agrees that this is the way he reads the bylaw, then we'll give you direct, we'll ask you to provide us with plan view, a front view, a side view of this plan you presented us. Would you, would you be, could you do that?
No, I'll withdraw.
Okay. So, Amy, what we'll do is we'll, is Bob in, was Bob in today, or is he in, or back?
He wasn't today.
He is in, he was there.
He's back. Okay. Could you give this to him tomorrow and ask him, take a look at this?
Yep.
And provide the, the board with comments?
Yep.
Okay.
I have another question for Mr. Brogan, because you, you mentioned a little bit about, I don't mean Mr. Brogan, I'm sorry, yeah. You mentioned a little bit about there might be an offset of about eight feet, there might not, okay? And I'm getting back again to this word conversion. Is there going to be a pass-through, a door, that goes from one foundation to the other And why is that?
It can be. I can buy a fire door, I can put a fire door, but that's a fire separation wall, it has to have a two-hour fire bill. So I can buy a fire door if I need to connect the two at a basement level. That would be, I wouldn't be against that.
Yeah, I'm thinking it has to have the ability to become a one-family dwelling again.
Thank you.
You know, I, again, I just, I'm hung up on this word conversion of an existing...
It would have to have the ability to be a one-family dwelling still, because if you're, it has to at least be a one-family type dwelling.
Well, it doesn't have to have the ability to go back to being one-family dwelling. Why would it have to have that? If you're converting a, a single family to a two-family, why would you want to have to be able to go back to a single family?
Right. But the idea is that it, it still has to be one dwelling.
It has to, it has to be one dwelling, so it has to, the key here is it has to conform to the single-family character of the neighborhood, and it has to meet the square-footage requirement. So, it wouldn't go back to a one-family, but it would, that doesn't, that I don't think would make sense. The fire, the fire rating you would have to do if you decided to do that, as fire doors and the two-hour ratings.
Just following along with Don was saying that, you know, if it doesn't start out as a one-family dwelling, or capable of being a one-family dwelling, it kind of takes away from the conversion to two-family. I see a few nods.
Other, other questions with regard to this? Mr. Quaglary, in the back, could you grab a mic?
Al Quaglary, I have a house on 194 Main Street that the ZBA actually gave a conversion to a two-family. So I would, I would stress that forcing the applicant to do a set of plans is like $3,000, and I got hosed when I took your special permit to the building inspector who rejected it, and I had $3,000 flushed down to the toilet. You have actually case history here, where you talked about a conversion being anything, even a rip-down and rebuild, which is what you ruled on my ZBA hearing. So I think the, your, your words are already in your prior decision of a year ago. As far as the two services, I currently am rebuilding two-family homes on Valley Street, and we have two underground services, so I don't know how that's a violation of the law. But more important is why have this bylaw if it's never going to be allowed? I, I spent about $8,000 and got screwed at the building department. And if you guys are allowed to give a special permit, how is another entity allowed to overturn it? So, I don't know, it seems to me like this place, this town needs more housing, and there's always pushback.
Thank you. You're correct. At 194, and we, we weighed very heavily on the word conversion, because in our bylaws in the B1 district, it does say the conversion of a single-family to a two-family, and this board deliberated that, and if you remember, it says, the rebuilding, the replacement, we had about six different definitions. And none of them said that, and Mr. Quaglary thinks he was actually going to tear down a single-family home, move it, and build a two-family home. So it was the conversion of a single-family home, the B1 lot, to a two-family, and it was actually going to be a tear-down and then a rebuild.
That was unanimous vote.
Yes. Thank you. You had another question?
Yeah, I was just hoping, Mr. Chairman, you could clarify something. You mentioned earlier that even though Mr. Brogan is renting out his basement apartment, the fact that his family's living upstairs...
Can you speak louder?
Is it on?
Now you are.
Okay, now. You mentioned that it's, right now, as Nine Fruit Street sits, it's not considered being rented out as a two-family, because he has family on the first level, and he's renting out the bottom level. So, my interpretation of what you say, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that my wife and I live on our first floor, so therefore I can convert my basement into an apartment and rent it out, and it wouldn't be viewed as a two-family.
According to our bylaw, you can rent rooms in your house.
It's not a room, it's a whole apartment that's being rented.
You can rent rooms in your house according to our bylaw. So if you want to rent out all the rooms in your basement to somebody, our bylaw doesn't deny you from doing that.
Well, more than four people requires a license. Does he have a license?
What license are you referring to?
Well, over four people becomes a boarding house by mass state code, so therefore is required to have a license.
As I, as I said, we'll be talking to building inspector. You'll be talking to the building inspector. We'll vet these issues.
I'm not trying to throw stones at you, I'm just trying to raise questions for legitimate answers.
Nope, good questions, good questions. As you said, you may want to do the same thing. Right? Any other questions?
Just one last question, Mr. Chairman. The gentleman who spoke in the back mentioned that he tore down his single-family dwelling and built a two-family dwelling. And I clearly remember at one of the past meetings about this very subject, that Bob Bullock spoke and mentioned that Mr. Brogan had the ability to tear down his single-family dwelling and build a two-family dwelling. So, I, I think tearing down and starting from scratch is a lot different than turning a single-family dwelling into a two-family. You're really setting a precedence. I mean, it means that anybody in Norfolk now can put a garage and an addition above and come to you for a two-family permit.
Well, not anybody. Your home has to pre-exist.
Correct.
And again, there's a cost related to that.
Well, of course it is.
There's a cost related to that. Putting, converting a single-family to a two-family is expensive.
Of course it is.
So somebody who's doing that obviously must have the financial resources and has the financial wherewithal to make sure they're going to, it's going to be profitable.
Correct. But again, it's...
So, so this isn't, everybody is not going to be doing this. And you're right, if the board starts issuing these type of special permits, that's why it's so important that we follow through with whether or not it meets the character of the single-family homes that are in that area.
Correct.
So I think that's important.
Correct.
And I think we're going to address that. We're going to ask Mr. Bullock to weigh in, and then if Mr. Bullock has no issue with the, with the reading of the bylaw, then we will ask Mr. Brogan to provide us with more detailed plans, so we can see a plan view, the front view, the side view, and I think we'll continue from there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So at this time, I'd like a motion to continue the public hearing for Nine Fruit Street until September 19th at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
Oh, you don't have to read, just, you can just...
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for Nine Fruit Street to 7...
Yep, for a special permit.
For a special permit, per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Section D2, C2 of the zoning bylaws, who allow for the conversion of a single-family dwelling in existence at the time of the bylaw adoption to a two-family dwelling. Property is located at Nine Fruit Street, Cessers Map 23, Block 54, Lot 49, and is in the R3 zoning district.
Thank you.
To Wednesday, 19th of September at?
Seven.
Seven o'clock?
At Room 124 Town Hall.
Room 124 Town Hall.
G.
Room G7, we're downstairs at 9:40.
Oh, we are. Okay. Second. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Hi. Thank you. Thank you. Amy, you'll make sure that Bob gets that, those plans tomorrow.
Amy, could you send to the board a copy of the approval that we did for the 194?
Yep.
Okay, the specific approval?
Yep.
I'm trying to understand, did we require the existing foundation be built on?
And was it approved or denied? Was it approved or denied of 194? Were you approved when that was...
Yes, we did a special permit. Right. And it allowed us to move, the foundation was completely new foundation.
That's what I want to see.
Yeah, it was. It was, we moved, the building moved back, was going to move back 50 feet. It was going to be a completely new building.
This, this, so, so, is there, is there zoning for two-families in town? Because somebody's going to build a two-family house. You can't do that, okay?
There is, you can do it, but there's no special zone.
So, is, is Nat's building, when he tore down the old building, he loses the status of a pre-existing building?
Exactly. That's all it was. It was an existing building.
But he didn't, but he didn't lose his, he was able to go ahead and build another two-family?
Both of the two, it was the same, move it and then build a two-family. That was the special.
It should have been, I guess I didn't understand what happened.
It was because it was in the B1, and Bob Bullock felt that it actually made the lot more non-conformal, or the residents more non-conformal, so he...
How, how was he able to?
We'll talk about that. We're going to talk about it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and we're still live.
Oh, okay. I thought we were off. Sorry, I should start to come up, I thought we were off. Sorry.
Okay. Now we're going to continue the public hearing for Six Hill Street. We didn't take any testimony in at the last public hearing, so... The, you're the applicant?
I am the applicant.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ted Cannon on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Nat Hunter, for Six Hill Street. And my apologies to those that have come out tonight, Mr. Chairman, but we would, like, and I'll elaborate, but we would respectfully request to withdraw the application without prejudice at this time. And I'll just give the board a little bit of background on that. We had some discussions leading up to this with the building commissioner, and one issue that was kind of troublesome was in, it's a sort of a tree-lined fence line on this area here, and when we get to the hearing, we'll show you photos, but this area is, is presently being used by Island Lighting for storage of equipment. And the commissioner had some, the building commissioner had some concern about that use because it's on a residential property. What we discussed is that we actually can take care of that with a special permit from this board through 48, Section 6. But that's an additional special permit, and we didn't want to have two different applications going at the same time. We don't want to drag people out for two separate hearings. And so we just felt, Nat and I felt that the most economical thing to do in terms of the board's time, in terms of everyone's time in the neighborhood, would be to pull back this particular filing, refile right away, ask for not only the parking special permit, which is on the current application, but also the special permit under 48, Section 6, to allow the storage of the commercial equipment over there. Can you show us up on the, I know the pointer you're doing. Sure. Can you show us up there? Just, the pointer's everywhere. So, if you're out at the site now, there's sort of a tree-lined fence line in this area over here, and so sort of that back triangle, if you will, is presently being used, and has been used for years by Island Lighting and by the prior business to store equipment there. And so we just want to do it the right way. The building commissioner raised concerns about that. It's been going on since, you know, the building was erected, so it's a longstanding use of that area. So, under 48, Section 6, we're just going to actually continue the use. It will actually, the, and this will come out when we do get into the hearing, but the use proposed by the applicant is going to be much less intensive than the use by Island Lighting. So, you know, this board has the ability to grant a special permit for that, provided that, you know, there's no expansion of the non-conformity. So we want to ask for that special permit as part of the filing. We can't do it with this filing, because public notice has already gone out. We don't want to have separate hearings. So, again, this board's time, for everyone's time in the audience, it's just easier to combine those into a single hearing. Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. Any questions from the board yet, regarding to that? If, if the... Well, he'd like to withdraw. We'll, we'll do a motion to withdraw.
It's like a do-over. It can be a do-over. We're going to do it over.
Yeah, we're going to, well, he's going to, he's going to come in with two special permit requests. He's going to come in with the current special permit request, and then an additional special permit request to add a triangle piece onto this as a second special permit on the application. It'd be, it'd be by easement, and it just, again, to continue what's already going on there, but it would legitimize it, and sort of in the building commissioner's eyes, again, with a special permit through this board. And I, I forgot to mention, I would like to say while the, the neighborhood is here, that we're very willing to step across the hall and not interrupt this board, but to meet with those neighbors that have come out, who have concerns about the type of business that Nate runs, so we could maybe answer some of their questions before. So if anyone wants to... I was going to ask, and it really, I don't want to, I don't want to take away your thunder with regard to that, but I was going to ask if you had any opposition to, if any of the residents did want to speak at this hearing, to allow them to speak now as part of the ZBA hearing, instead of outside the ZBA hearing? Just if they have any concerns, that they want to allow you and, and Nat to know. If you do have an issue with that, we can certainly hold off on that, but I think it come out. I hate to send them all home. I, I know the request is last minute, so certainly if people would like to be heard, by all means, it's a public hearing. As long as you don't mind that. Okay? All right. So do we have any, any concerns or questions from the public? Any, nothing from the board right now? Okay.
No, but should, should we continue with this, or should we withdraw?
We're not going to continue. It's going to be a withdrawal.
Should we just withdraw?
We're going to, we're still, we're, the public hearing is still open. When the public is done speaking, we're actually going to make a motion to withdraw the special permit and continue it to another point in time.
But what happens to the testimony of the, of the, if somebody, if somebody speaks? What happens to testimony if, if the case is withdrawn? I mean, should we just let it...
Well, there's no testimony being, I don't, he's not providing any testimony. They're just going to, the public is going to be allowed to ask any questions or voice any concerns.
any concerns, but that's not, that's, it's not going to be, they're not going to be addressing the special permit application, there's just going to be concerns with what was presented earlier. That's why I asked Attorney Cannon, does he have an issue with that? He would be the first to tell me I couldn't do that, I think, right?
Yeah, no, not at all, it, it wouldn't be a continuance, it would be a withdrawal, no prejudice, and then a whole new filing.
Okay.
Anything, if the board allows the request, then this petition would be withdrawn.
Okay.
So all the testimony would be withdrawn with it.
Okay.
Then we'll have a new filing, we'll get in next week.
Okay.
That we would hope to schedule for September 19th.
Okay.
And at that time, we'll present evidence and folks could be heard again.
I think it allows, I think there's been a lot of work done on this, I know there, a lot of the Butters have contacted Amy, I think you've got five or six different letters, we've had a lot of, a lot of information passed to the board for this, so I think it would be, I think it's, I think it would be, it helps the applicant to obviously hear the, the neighborhood and to help him as he moves forward with his application, so. Ms. Whitney?
Thank you, Elizabeth Betsy Whitney, 26 Valley Street, Pondville. Actually, my question was, if we add any testimony tonight, is it on the record and what is it attached to? So, if this is going to be withdrawn, I probably would save my detailed comments until the next meeting, if that's advisable. I'm not sure, do you have a?
With the application withdrawn, Attorney Cannon is correct, the testimony taken tonight will...
Will go where?
Will go away, but I think the whole point is to allow the residents to, to speak, and if, you know, you don't have to go into any great detail.
Don't have to go in...
But certainly allow you to speak.
I do go into great detail very easily. I do plan to represent the residential face of Pondville, and this goes back to a town meeting, a special town meeting in May of 2013, when the commercial zoning was changed to commercial and residential by special permit. I was at that meeting, I was at the microphone, I was very much in favor of that zoning change, and I am still in favor of it today. My house was built in 1754 by Jacob Pond. We're still there, there were few houses in the neighborhood. I was concerned when talk of commercial development came to town, and quite frankly, when Al Quagliari came to town, and Al and I have had, and this is going through the board, not directly to Al, we have had a 10-year relationship that has gotten better and better. And again, I am here to represent the residential face of Valley Street, Hill Street, and Old Pond Street that were addressed very directly, and the vote that was taken at town meeting was 61 in favor of the residential component and 16 opposed. We were very happy with that change. So when we do get to the real meeting the next time, I will talk more about this. Now, this is probably the shortest speech I've ever given, so...
I think it is, I'm going to make sure I check the record so we can see you for future reference, right? Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you very much.
Tom Martin, 42 Everett Street. Actually, my property backed up to Hill Street, and for some reason I didn't get a notice about your special permit, which I really don't understand why, but my question to you is that there is a lot of information about your company, so why don't you tell us what your company does, so we can understand what's actually going to try to go into our neighborhood?
Okay, so, my company is Hunter Environmental. We do, in the winter, we do commercial snow removal, and in the off-season, we do what would best be described as landscape construction, so we've installed lawns, stuff like that.
So you're telling me you're a landscaper that does snow removal in the winter?
Correct.
Or are you a snow remover that does landscaper in the summer?
I think the lines are blurred.
Okay, okay, okay.
Now, the other question I have, before you file for the permit, right, I would like the board to see all your material safety data sheets, to see what you're going to be storing on-site, or what's on-site. Can you provide those too?
Mr. Martin, that will, that kind of, that, that detail will be part of the public hearing, I think you want to, I think he will, will be asking for that at the public hearing when we have it. I think, I think it would be remiss now to ask him to provide that, but he will probably provide that to the board as one of the things we ask for at the public hearing.
So we have a chance to review it?
Yes. Yes, yes, okay. Yeah.
Just to clarify, so I can better prepare for the meeting, that is all materials on the site anywhere from Whiteout in the office?
No, I think you're correct, MSD sheets are for everything, a can of caulk, I think a caulking has an MSD sheet. I think you're, you're probably looking for items such as salt, sand, chemicals, is that what you're referring to with regard to the MSD sheets?
Every contractor has to have a list of material safety data sheets.
Yes.
They have to give to his employees.
Correct.
That's, everything he uses.
Correct.
So, that's what we're looking for. That's what I would like to see anyways.
Okay. Any other concerns? Mr. Martin?
Now, the last question, all right, is, has to do with Hill Street itself, with the bridge button. All right, now I understand you're going to have vehicles, and quite a few vehicles? What is the traffic pattern that you're going to use?
So... So, so two things that I think are critical to point out here is we're actually going to have significantly less traffic than ILP, the company that's existing there now. The other thing that's worth noting, one of the first things I went through when I looked into this building is seeing what the existing problems are in the neighborhood, and one of the biggest, most universal complaints was truck traffic coming up Hill Street onto Everett Street, specifically, there's some stone walls up there that get taken out if you take an 18-wheeler through there. So my solution to that problem is moving the gate in front of Six Hill Street back so that you can take a left out, which will funnel the commercial traffic into the C-1 District, not into the residential District, and to the main roads faster.
So you're going down to Valley Street?
Presently, the gate, as it is now, is very close to Hill Street, so it doesn't allow trucks to head in that direction. Nate, oop, sorry, down here, so Nate's proposing to move that back even with the front of the building, and so that space is going to allow those vehicles to head that way to avoid that intersection with Hill and Everett Street. Thank you. Thank you. Amy, is Mr. Martin on the, is he on the list?
He's not on the other list.
Okay.
Number 42 Everett's not on it, I have 58, 48, 46, 54.
Number 42 Everett Street backs up to Hill Street.
This is the Assessor's, a Buttersville Butters list within 300 feet, and number 42 is not on the list.
I got it for Joe's property on Six Hill Street.
You're not?
I'm not Joe. Okay, I'll...
Could you, could you check with the Assessor's office, Amy? And can we just include, Mr. Martin? We'll include you regardless on the public hearing notice, okay?
Mr. Chairman, just for the, just for the record, the plan that you see before you is that, is the, the tax map plans right now for the parcel, so as far as generating the parcel, a Butters list, it's based off a plan that doesn't exist on record, so we'll go back and check to make sure it's properly noticed.
Thank you.
And that's part of the, well, I'm not going to get into this, but part of the issue with this area.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Quiglieri, could you get, take a mic?
I just wanted to make one correction to Rich. The plan was a plan of record that was supposed to have been filed in 1979 for a variance approval, not an Assessor's plan. And that never got done, and so, that's the correct definition of that plan.
I think that's all going to get sorted out by Attorney Cannon and his applicant for our next hearing, okay? Any other, any other concerns in the public?
Yes, my...
Just for the record?
Oh.
I didn't say that that shouldn't have been recorded and been the plan of record.
I understand.
I just said that that was never recorded, so...
I think we're, I think we're trying to get the general comments, I think we'll, you know, avoid the name. Go ahead.
Yes, my...
Your name?
Christopher Prince, 9 Hill Street.
Okay.
My concern is the noise. As soon as you're going to have residential right across the street, myself included, the noise from these back, these trucks backing up, has been a problem with our ILP forever. I mean, we're talking 4:00, 4:30 in the morning, they don't care about us, you know? The lights from the building shining our windows, don't care about us. They go up the street with their trucks and tear up that, the end, the memorial, and they don't care about the rest of the neighborhood. We've suggested going down to Valley, but you may have a, an idea where you can do that, but the point is, do you really belong in this neighborhood? Do you feel you belong here when there's residential all around you?
Yeah, I think that will, again, be part of the public hearing, I don't think we want to, I don't think I'd ask him to do this at this time, okay? All right.
I have just one other question. Does the applicant own the property?
I think, Mr. Cannon, I'll let you address that.
No, it's, it's still owned by Island Lighting.
I didn't hear you.
It's still owned by Island Lighting.
So how is, he filed for the permit, not the owner?
He's allowed to file for the special permit as the applicant, he has the owner's signature on the, on the special permit application. Okay. Okay, all right, any other concerns? Oh, I see someone over in the corner.
Hi, Peter Schwalbe, 58 Everett. Just to understand also some of the background, why does the Assessor's site say the owner of Six Hill is Mary Gould? Just to understand kind of what the background of all this is.
I think that's one of the reasons why the special permit's being withdrawn, there appears to be some administrative paperwork that is not in order on this property that I think Mr. Cannon, Attorney Cannon is going to work through. Is that a, would you like to elaborate on that, or do you think that's a fair assessment?
Well, I would say everything is in order, but we'll clarify, everything is in order, but we'll clarify that for the board and for the neighborhood when we do present the evidence.
And so although Mr. Hunter doesn't yet own the property, the, this process is, as a preemptive process, is still valid, right? I mean, I, I'm kind of confused, I would think that the property owner would be the one that's filing the applications and such.
The property owner has signed the special permit, a request, he's, and so, an applicant can come forward to the board with that request as long as he has the approval of the owner, which he has done. Okay. Based on the current information we have, that Island Lighting still owns it. Okay. Or owns it, that he is the applicant, so he is allowed to do that.
Got it. And then, another question is, and this may be for the next meeting, but just to simply understand, if we're utilizing ILP's operations as a baseline for precedence for making decisions for how this particular company can special permit, is that valid if we, what I learned today from town offices is that ILP didn't have any special permit process, and there's no records in place to see what they were actually permitted to do at the site. Maybe that's my misunderstanding, but that's the understanding I got from the communications from the town today.
I think the board will weigh the special permit based on the criteria in our, for zoning. We won't be, you know, we can, we can, we'll take in information with regard to the previous owner or the previous establishment, but I think the board, as you saw with the previous hearing, we will base it on its own merits.
Got it, okay, makes sense, thank you. The only other question I have is for Nate, if you have any other info about the size and scope of your business that might help the residents understand kind of your operations, what, what it looks like in terms of truck count, materials, you know, the types of clients you serve, things like that, just to help, I, I know that from our communications, but haven't had a chance to disseminate that widely to other neighbors and thought maybe you'd want that opportunity here.
Well, I'm not sure that, if that's the best thing to do right now during the meeting, or if we'd like to meet afterwards and discuss it sort of informally, because I, I am committed to being a positive member of this community, or going to be neighbors, so I want to get to know you guys, I want you guys to know me. The, you know, if you, you want a taste of the size, Darren, could you raise your hand for a second? Okay, so my company right now is raising its hand.
You must be busy.
I mean, granted, this is off-season, it scales up in the winter, you know, and I cannot guarantee that these levels will be maintained, but I'm afraid that a lot of people have been looking at my website and my marketing materials, and they are designed to make us look big. So, it, it can be a little misleading, which was intentional, you know, we tried to project a presence.
I think, I think what he's, I think what he's asking, and maybe, and I think you'll probably, it might behoove you to do it, is the most, the more information, and probably passing it through Amy, you can provide us with, with regard to your operation, maybe with regard to trucks, everything you're doing, the more information you provide us with prior to the public hearing will probably help alleviate a lot of questions and give people questions, peace of mind, maybe some other issues, so anything you can do prior to the public hearing, say and solve, what are these, these ice-melting chemicals, what type of trucks we're looking at, are loaders, sizes? I know when I go into the city of Boston to pull permits, the transportation says how long, how wide, how high, what's the weight, they want to know all this information, if I don't have it, they send me out the door and say, see you later, come back. So I think anything you can do, and again, passing it through Amy is probably the best way to provide us with information so that people have a chance to review it prior to the public hearing. It isn't, it doesn't become hearsay based on your website or your marketing material would certainly be helpful, okay?
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
I just want to go back to this...
No, you already asked too many questions. I'm serious, no.
I don't understand this process. So it's, my understanding is that Hunter Environmental is going to lease the building from the current owner, and he's allowed to file for a permit with the current owner's permission?
Go ahead, Mr. Cannon, Attorney Cannon, sorry.
Hunter Environmental could lease it, they could buy it, this happens all the time when business people are trying to engage in business, so someone's interested in the property, they want to come and get relief, and the owner gives them time to do that, that happens all the time, as this board well knows.
He's allowed, as an, he's, the applicant can be different from the owner, he's allowed.
So if Hunter Environmental moves off the property, the permit expires?
Yes.
That, that's why we're back here now. That's why we're back here now.
Correct.
Because Island Lighting is moving on to bigger and better things.
Did, anybody else with a question back there? Okay, all right, so I think, is the 19th of, it looks like the 19th of September, does that give you sufficient time?
Yeah, that would be great, but again, it wouldn't be a continuance, so we would just ask respectfully for a withdrawal without prejudice. And then it's up to us to get an application in.
And then you'll file for a new, okay, I'm just noting it here.
Thank you, but that's our hope, is to be back on the 19th.
So could I get a motion for withdrawal of this special permit, Don?
I'd like to make a motion that we withdraw the special permit.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice. I don't want to file.
Amy, can we have the file back? Sorry.
Can we just say special permit?
Well, he's got to, now he's got to...
I gotta read it, it's the record.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we withdraw the special permit application without prejudice from, for special permit in accordance with Section J 7A 2B of the zoning bylaws to allow contractors' headquarters in Ralph I Hway area to allow outdoor storage of more than three commercial vehicles limited to the rear yard of a minimum of 3,000, 30,000 square feet of land, and in accordance with Section J 4B 1B, three of the Norfolk zoning bylaws to allow outdoor storage of fuel, refuge, materials, and/or equipment screened from view of a solid fence structure and located to the side and/or rear of the building to which it is necessary. The property is located at 9 Hill Street, Assessor's Map 25, Block 84, Lot 7, in the C-1D zoning district.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your consideration. All right, thank you, Rich, for coming, we do appreciate it. Amy?
We're not, no, I know, we're not done yet.
This is 9 Fruit, I want to give it to you, so I'll forget and take it with me. Okay, now we have a couple of minutes. Amy, we have what, we have May 30th, and we have April 26th, correct?
And you have June 6th.
And we have June 6th. We have June 6th as well, okay. So does everybody want to take a moment and review the April 26 minutes?
Sure.
Amy, I just have to ask, I think I asked this question before, but do you type this stuff?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I mean, the less we say, makes it easier for her.
Amen.
Oh, wow.
Amen. We didn't talk, you'd be all right, right?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes of April twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen?
I'll second it. A discussion, Amy, on the third page in the last paragraph, if you look to the left, it says Cleveland exiting to Rockwood. Three-quarters of the way down, Cleveland exiting to Rockwood. Right below that, I think you're using the Latin word for formulae. It's formulae. Okay. Do we have a second? So do I have a motion to approve as noted?
As amended.
As amended?
As amended.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's look at the May thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
No, it's only from the state, so it's gotta be just passed over to Joe, that'd be great. Thank you.
I got, I got some of them here, I don't know.
Here's a paper, please, Joe.
Thank you.
For the next one, too.
I'm not finding any missed calls. I'm not finding any missed calls.
Good.
You gonna trump me again?
I did.
You did?
Yep.
So then I'll let you then make the motion.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept the minutes of May thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen with the following correction. In the second page, paragraph one, two, three, four, it says that, the second sentence, Mr. Collessus said he's comparing it to other forty Bs. It says separate clusters are no appealing. I believe that word should be not appealing.
All right. There we go.
Do I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, May thirtieth. Next is June sixth, two thousand and eighteen. If everybody could take a chance look at that.
Is that the correct one for that?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Yes, this is spelled right.
Yes, of course.
One second. Amy, where was that? Could you show me that one again?
Of course, the, one second, right there, on the, before, the second to last page.
Okay, that's right, yep, that's good.
Oh, I haven't found anything else to comment on. Anybody find anything?
Any question? You wanna make a motion?
Make the motion. I make the motion, we accept the minutes of June sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Any questions?
Well, then fix it.
Dennis, you were out that meeting, right? That was your one miss.
Really? I'm not worried about the ground, I'm worried about the, I'm worried about the content.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I get a motion to close the public, close the zoning board of appeals meeting?
Do we have to affirmatively continue the preserve in Abbeville?
Yes, we do. Thank you very much, Bob. Good catch.
Wow. Former assistant chairman. Very good.
Very good, Bob. Amy, what's wrong with you? All right, very good.
We can call us in an hour.
Could I get a motion, could I get a motion to continue the public hearing for the preserve at Abbeville and Abbeville Commons till September fifth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven o'clock at the King Philip Middle School Auditorium?
To seven-thirty, correction.
Seven, both seven-thirty.
Yep. That's what it says right on here.
Seven-thirty. But you, on my, on the, yeah, you had seven o'clock.
Do you wanna continue to seven o'clock, or it says here?
No, you have seven-thirty in there, but.
Does it say seven-thirty for tonight?
It's seven-thirty for tonight.
Thank you, so seven, it'll be seven o'clock on the fifth, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
I went with seven, I went with seven o'clock, yeah. So I was correct. It was seven o'clock. So moved.
So moved.
So moved. Second?
I second.
Yeah, there you go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to close the zoning board of appeals meeting eight forty-five PM on August fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
I so move.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right.